Oh, yeah, I watch them. Who is gonna take note? Do you want to take notes in roll call?
I can. Yeah. I can do it.
Okay, so. What? Okay, always a good, always a good idea. Morning, morning. Bruce Jones. So, we're gonna go, we're gonna go ahead and get started. For those of you that have been to board meetings before, you'll know that when we have four or more board members, we actually have a quorum, so we have kind of an official meeting. Right? So, we just need to do a little bit of housekeeping up front here. We're gonna ask our superintendent, Dr. Harris, to play the role of secretary today.
We'll see how that goes.
Yeah. So, we're gonna call the meeting to order. What does that look like? Like 9:03, 9:04? And we're gonna begin with a roll call, which will also serve as a quick introduction to the folks up here. Do you wanna do the roll call?
Brian Mallow.
I am here, I am here.
Phoebe Casimir.
I'm here too.
Mike Shackleton here. Joe Ruffalo.
Here.
If you will rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good morning. Thank everyone for showing up, showing up this morning for what we're hoping is gonna be a really good conversation about kind of where we are in our Blueprint 220 facilities plan. I was, I was trying to think of a funny facility-related story. I'm gonna go back to my college years. I did my undergrad at Bradley University, a picturesque and bucolic area in Illinois. Any Bradley grads in the room? I know something's wrong. I, my sophomore year, I was the head of our fraternity's recruitment process, kind of a formal thing. We had all these people, we were gonna be going through our house. We had an old house. They were all supposed to start at 3 o'clock, big deal. We're having lunch, and somebody notices the ceiling's bowing a little bit. One of the guys gets on the table, just to kind of feel what's there, right? The whole ceiling collapsed, water everywhere, all over our eating areas and everything. So, we cleaned it up, but now we had this big hole. Right? Somebody got the idea, because we had all these guests coming in a few hours, somebody had the idea to just put our flag over it. Right? And as, as, as the guys kind of came through the house, everybody commented on, "Oh, it's a cool place to put the flag." Right? Now, putting flags over ceiling holes is not a good facility strategy, obviously, right? And we've had issues in Barrington 220 in the past. I mean, Craig, where's Craig? I mean, Craig, Craig was principal at station when he was placing buckets, you know, underneath, underneath leaks in the roof for a while.
You would get a dingling sound.
Yes, right. I say that because we've come a long way in our facilities, right? And, and I do wanna take the opportunity to thank Penny and Joe, who are two board members who have served on our facilities committee for the last, I think, Joe, you've been at it seven years? Right? And Penny, I did that at facilities even longer. Penny, right? These two individuals, your neighbors, right, have spent a lot of time and know our facilities inside and out, and have created, I think, a better set of facilities than we've ever had in the past. That said, there comes time where periodically you wanna kind of reassess that, and that's the time we're in now. Right? Hopefully, have, has, by show of hands, how many people have been to a Blueprint 220 meeting in the last year or so? Okay, so fair about, that's good. You have probably heard then that the reason that we've kind of started this process has to do with the retiring of bonds, right? This community invested a whole bunch of money, almost $150 million, right, back in referendums that started in kind of the mid to late 90s, went through about 2001. And during that time, we did a lot of things to buildings, including building new buildings. Right? That debt is due to come off of our books in a few years, the end of the 2021 school year. We're currently paying, you know, the number, the number moves a little bit based on, on property values, right? But we're currently paying, say, in that $700 to $750 a year range for all of that referendum debt, right? It was all funded with 20-year bonds, right? So, we're at a point, right, where we have to, as a community, make some decisions. As that money comes off the books, do we want to replace it with another investment in our schools or not? And just take kind of the savings to us as taxpayers, right? So, these, these are tough decisions, right? And, you know, our facilities committee was kind of ahead of this. They were teeing this up, this conversation. And then a couple of years ago, we decided that we would try to be really thoughtful about the process. So, we've got just a couple of slides here, right, that kind of summarize where we've been, right? So, you know, back in the winter of 17, and actually, a little bit before that, we hired DLR to kind of help guide us through this process from the architectural perspective, right? And then, we, in the spring, we had a whole bunch of community information sessions on the needs of all the buildings. And to show of hands, a lot of people have been to those, right? In the summer, we had a core team that kind of looked at, based on trends, what the teaching and learning priorities were, and how that would be reflected in our facilities plan. Last fall, we looked, we had meetings at every building and, and took a building-specific focus and said, "What has to happen in each building to support those teaching and learning priorities?" And we got a lot of input from the community on that, and, and that got reflected in, in a lot of the renovation ideas. And then, it, it kind of, towards the end of last year, you know, we had, we started taking all of that input, put it together in a facility master plan. And in January, and we'll talk about this a little bit, in January, the board got kind of our first look at some of the financial impact. Right? And, and that has triggered a lot of board conversation, right, about how to set up some priorities. We're at the point, honestly, where I think we articulated like the last couple of weeks, we're kind of done talking to ourselves, and we need some help and some feedback from others, right? So, that's kind of the purpose of this morning. Now, I will tell you, as we tried to take all of those building levels and create K-12 priorities in kind of a draft form, right, which you kind of see in some of these charts, you know, along the side of the room, and you see in those really big charts that hopefully you were able to pick up. And if you weren't able to pick up one of the big charts with columns on it, you might wanna go back there and, and grab one, because this has all the detail on it. But the process that the board used was to try to kind of set priorities at the high school, middle, and elementary levels in terms of sequence. And then we had to kind of create the K-12 priority, in other words, among the levels, kind of where would you, where are you gonna, where are you gonna place high school priorities relative to middle and elementary? Now, we know, especially by looking at the dollars, and I'm gonna say this upfront. If you guys have sticker shop, we had sticker shop too, right? When we looked at the pricing on this, it's, you know, building schools is a lot different than building residential property. It's a lot different than building commercial property. The question you could ask is why, right? The, well, there's a lot of detail. You can spend an hour talking about it. But at a high level, if you think about it, you have some specialized areas, science labs, performing arts areas, things like that, that, that can take a lot of dollars per square foot. The other thing is, when you look at a school, your expectation for a school is not that it's gonna last 30 to 50 years, but you're trying to build a building that's gonna last 70, 80 years. So, we don't use a whole lot of drywall in buildings, right? It, it's a lot of brick and cinder block and stuff like that. So, these buildings are built, and plus, there's a lot of codes, right, that go in from a safety perspective, you know, whether it's fire codes, handicapped access, a lot of codes that schools have to apply. So, when we look at these, you know, the numbers, you know, start approaching 400 bucks a square foot. You know, at a, at a high level, elementary space is a little cheaper than middle school space. Middle school space is a little cheaper than high school space, right, on a dollar per square foot basis. But the numbers, and we spent a lot of time at the board level, challenging the numbers, right? The way we got the numbers, we had our architects that did some kind of planning work, and we've had, I'm trying to think, do we have anybody here from Pepper? Yeah, I don't think so.
Lance couldn't make it.
Yeah, Lance couldn't make it. But, you know, the, the board has had a, a pretty, a pretty strong relationship with Pepper in building a lot of our, in managing a lot of our major projects. And, and, and they have really done an excellent job, right? And they do a lot of schooling. So, the numbers that we used kind of came from those plans and came from Pepper's estimates. Some of the estimates have kind of an escalation built in saying, you know, because we know you might not get to these projects for two or three years, so we're gonna put some inflation in there. We're now starting to get to a point in construction projects where, as the economy's heating up a little bit, prices are coming up, coming up significantly. These guys are struggling right now in the facilities committee with, you know, I'd say for the last four or five years, when we put estimates out there, and then we got the actual bids, the bids were coming in much lower than the estimates. For the first time this year, now the costs are coming in above the estimates, right? So, there's a lot of uncertainty to how much you can actually go with a construction project at a, at a high school. So, what, what Pepper did is they put a range on all the numbers, right? All of the numbers that you are seeing attached to different processes, different activities up there, represent kind of the midpoint of that range, right? We won't get exact numbers until you kind of do a little bit more of the design phase and start going out to bid, right? So, the exact, so just, we want you to know kind of where those numbers come from, and, and to know that the board shares your sticker shop with somebody, right? And we spent a lot of time, I think, going through those facilities committee, looked at them, board talked about them in, in total. But what we tried to do then, right, is using those numbers, right, and the board asked for kind of a disaggregation, kind of some of the line item detail that you're seeing here. And we said, "You know, when we want, when we talk to the community, we wanna be able to create some options at different budget levels." And we know each budget level represents a tax impact, right? So, when you're kind of making a value assessment, right, so you'll see at the top of each chart, we try to tell you what the relative dollar impact would be based on today's tax bill for a $500,000 market value of home, right? So, this was kind of the, the structure we used, and then the board debated, we debated for a while how to, how to kind of create priorities. And I will tell you, the process that we used was, ended up being fairly straightforward. We created a tool for board members and some administrators, right, where, where you could go and assign, you know, your, for, for all of these, you had a spreadsheet, and you could put it into the buckets based on your budget value. We then took all of that input and just kind of created a mathematical average, right, for the whole group, and, and that created kind of a first draft. What you are looking at here is probably like a third or fourth draft. What changed from that first draft, as we moved some stuff around based on board discussion and based on discussion with Pepper, there were some activities that need to move in a group, right? So, when you look at your chart, for instance, you'll see boxes around some elements, right? Those boxes kind of represent tied groupings that have to move as a group. So, for instance, if you look under the $150 million column, there's a front entry, an atrium addition, and a student services renovation. It kind of, those two kind of have to go together, right? So, when you're kind of setting your priorities, you kind of, kind of move those together. So, the board kind of went through all that. The end result, so far, right, for this, this, this graph for today is what you see here. Do you guys wanna add anything?
You know, you mentioned, you mentioned our referendum that had increased funds in the late 90s, early 2000s. At one point, you had done an inflation analysis on that number, and what that would have been like in today's dollars? Because when you did that, my jaw dropped. Do you remember what that was?
Yeah. If, if you go, right, there's a lot of construction indices. You can just go look, look at them online, right? So, we were, we were trying to compare that a little bit, right? If, if you look at, at how construction costs inflated in the last 20 years, it's about double, right? So, your purchasing power for a construction dollar is about half today than what it was 20 years ago.
I, I only ask that question because I know myself, when I was trying to put the, prioritize things in these buckets, I felt like the bucket wasn't large enough because I wasn't fitting as much in as I thought I could.
Yeah, and that's, and I think we all had that. And, and that's why I said, I can tell you, for all seven board members, when we were trying to do that prioritization thing, it was hard.
Took a long time.
Because we all thought we were gonna be able to get all this done, you know, in a smaller dollar item, and it ended up being bigger. So, for this morning, right, what we'd like to do is, is we'll kind of quickly walk through a little bit of the priorities. We really wanna have a discussion, right, and try to answer questions and stuff that people have. I will tell you, what we've tried to do as a board is, we said, "Okay, maybe, I, I would prefer to see this priority elevated, you know, earlier in the plan," right? And that's a reasonable thing. We wanna hear some of that. Particularly, if we can say, "I would trade this for this," right? Because that's kind of at the board table, and that's part of the problem we've had, right? It's, we all, it's all important, right? It's just a matter of setting the priorities. So, if you moved something up, you gotta say, "Can I move something else back?" We're gonna have some discussion, and then, one of the things, did everybody grab any of the sticky notes? Maybe we can start passing those out a little bit, because I can tell you, the first exercise we're gonna do after some conversation is, if you have an idea, I'd like to see, in this bucket, I'd like to see this moved up, or I think this could be moved back, or you'd like to propose a trade, or whatever. We wanna capture that, so you can write it on these sticky notes, and then you'll be able to post it on the boards at some point. It'll take a quick 5, 10-minute break to do that. So, during the discussion, if you generate a thought that you wanna share, right, you can write it on there. The second exercise we're gonna do towards the end is, is trying to use some dots to find where your comfort level is and some of the value that's represented up here. So, that's kind of a quick, kind of look at what's ahead, right? Now, what I do wanna do, because we are in a board meeting, and I saw where's Dan. There he is, he's right up front. He said, "You need, you wanted to make a comment, you have to leave early," right? So, from a public comment perspective, is there anybody, is there anybody else that just wants to make a quick comment, and they have to leave? Okay.
Do you have questions about things like, I don't understand what boardrooms is?
Yeah, we'll talk about, yeah, we'll, we'll get to kind of all that in a sec. So, here's where I'll do that. I'll give you the opportunity, kind of open up public comment. You can make a comment, you know, as I always tell people, public comments are not necessarily.
I'll probably go back to another meeting, but I gotta go to another meeting after this. I just wanted to make a few comments to the board on three or four areas real quick. First, on the cafeteria and food space.
Stop. Have you been before the board before? We know who you are, but can you introduce yourself to everyone else?
My name's Dan Droferbrook. I've lived in Barrington 25 years. Three, three kids, all been through the high school, two still at the high school. And I've been working on a, on a committee with, at least we sent it to. It's a committee that's looking at our cafeteria and the food service in the Barrington schools. And we've, we've come up with some recommendations. One thing that applies to Blueprint is what to do with cafeteria space. I think our recommendation, at least I can speak for me, the most important place to spend money is in the area where the food is served, not in the, the back kitchen area. That space is fine. I mean, there's some, some equipment that needs to be replaced over time. That can be paid for out of capital budgets. Really, you don't need to spend any blue for money behind the scenes. And the eating spaces, yeah, they could be nice, but they're good enough. The real problem is the participation rate is really low, only 5% of the high school students get a full lunch, and there's two lines, and big cinder block wall, and 95% of the students go on one side of the cinder block wall, and 5% go on the other, and we'd like to have more eating the real food. And so, that space needs to be reconfigured, and spend more money on good lighting, good, good presentation, the food people eat with their eyes. And it's like a restaurant, people want good-looking food. They want it to feel like they wanna eat it and choose it. So, there's where I think Blueprint can come in, and we had to have the same problem at Prairie with this two-line thing, with barriers and the traffic flow, it's not good for choosing food. So, that's the first thing. Second thing, another topic I wanted to mention real quick is, I'm a big promoter of flexible learning spaces because I think the traditional classroom with four walls, 20-plus students and a teacher, that's, that's a thing of the past. With technology, things are really changing, so you need to focus on flexible learning spaces. Third thing I wanted to emphasize, and, and this spreadsheet is awesome, by the way, but unless you've been to some of the other meetings, it's hard to understand. There's a few things on here that I think should be paid for out of operating budgets and not borrowing money like furniture, fixtures, and equipment. I don't think we should be borrowing long-term funds to pay for that. I think that can be paid for over time out of operating budget. You should only borrow money for things that you can't save for, big things. And then finally, I wanted to say that I like column two because I think it's gonna be really hard for people to wanna pay more in taxes. Column two is basically neutral. Taxes won't go up. Things are pretty crazy in Illinois, and they're gonna get even crazier. So, don't create a long-term tax burden on people. So, that, that's the end of my comments.
Well, thank you.
Thanks for listening.
Okay, we'll look forward to seeing you at some other meeting.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.
So, it's a good segue, just to kind of, we'll, we'll, and I, and some people may have had a chance to study this ahead of time, others not. We'll just kind of, just gonna take a couple of minutes and kind of quickly go through this just so you understand kind of, you know, how this thing is set up right now, right? So, in the first column, right, which is labeled roughly $80 million, you'll see, you'll see something called Level 1. For those that have been at other meetings, you may recognize the terminology. But really, what Level 1 is, is responding to all of our infrastructure needs at every building, right? So, as part of this process, our architecture partner, DLR, went through and did, they walked the buildings inside and out, roofs and all that, and they came up with a list of all the things that have to be done to the building envelope and the site, you know? And so, that's what's represented by Level 1. This is kind of that level with just the stuff you gotta do to keep things working right, right? It's, it's, it's some of your AVAC, HVAC systems, your rooftop units, your roofs themselves, other infrastructure within the building. The board felt that that was kind of our first priority to protect our existing investment in our buildings, right? The second thing you'll see are safety and security upgrades. In, in, in talking just earlier, somebody had asked, "Will you get into some detail on that?" I'll give you a little bit of detail, but obviously, we don't wanna get into too much detail on how we would create some safety and security improvements. But what we have shared in the past is, it's kind of based on a, a principle of building security based on compartmentalization, right? So, the idea is, if there ever is an incident in a building, right, you wanna be able to kind of section off the building to contain whatever is happening as well as provide safety for those outside that, that immediate area, right? So, we have looked and reviewed in our closed session a lot of different safety technologies that different schools have, have employed. I think, I don't think we've seen at this point a technology that another school has done that we haven't looked at, right? So, all of those are kind of part of the safety and security upgrade. I think the, the board has been pretty insistent that this be a top priority. We think that's consistent with the community values. If it's not, hopefully you'll challenge us on that, but we think it is. And, and I think as we go forward, I, I don't think it's an area that we'll end up being cheap on. But it's also not an inexpensive area, right? As you'll see, it's, it's a fair amount of our community and taxpayer dollars. But the board has made the decision, as you'll see, because it's in this first level, right, saying, "Look, our, our first priority really is just to take care of our existing investment and make sure that we're providing the appropriate safety and security upgrades for kind of the modern expectations for safety and security in a school building." In the second category, what you're seeing here, right, is a priority that is focused on the high school first. As the board talked about it, it was, you know, this is the building, this building here is an incredibly busy building every day of the year, including the summer. All of our community's students come through this building. And this is probably the one building and site that is the, is kind of the most constrained, right? As you guys know, we acquired some land on the other side of Hart Road. We've made a commitment to kind of a single high school here. And, and you'll see, you know, in, in, in all of these blocks, right, there's a section for additions and renovations, right? And then there's a section for site work. At the high school in particular, there's a lot of site work. And if you hadn't had a chance to kind of look at what that plan looks like, I know it's available online, but you know, it's a pretty significant restructuring of, of all of our athletic and playfields and the traffic flow around this building. So, you'll see that became kind of a key part of the board's priority. You'll also see there's a priority on the furniture and fixtures, right, particularly at the, at the middle in elementary levels, right? Although, there's a, there's money kind of put in here to, to the point that Dan and others have made, trying to give teachers the ability to change the way they instruct in the classroom and giving them more flexible furniture was seen as kind of the first priority. It's probably not inexpensive to be able to impact education at the middle and elementary levels. To the point Dan has made, we have had some conversations about how to, how to take some of the furniture and fixtures and incorporate it into our budget. So, that, that's an ongoing conversation that we're having also. You'll also see that there's some kitchen renovations that got, that got elevated also at the elementary. You heard that in a lot of the community sessions at the elementary buildings last fall. Then we started getting into the next box. You'll see, we kind of complete the additions and rented and site work that was in the master plan at this building in the high school, right? And then, as we move into the middle school, the first priority, you know, after the safety and security was really to say, "Let's build the space to get rid of the mobiles," right, that are now probably, what, 12 years old?
Yeah. Will be.
Right? So, you'll see those in those blocks. Let's eliminate those. And then there's obviously some site work that are, that, that Pepper has said, "Look, if you're gonna do all that work, you also gotta kind of do some site work here." We also, at the elementary level, we know, at Countryside Grove Lines in North Barrington, we have traffic issues, right, in terms of flow. It creates some safety issues. Particularly, I would say, at Countryside and North Barrington because they're located on, on streets where cars are traveling pretty fast, right? And you've got school buses coming in and out. It has created safety concerns for years, right? So, this would kind of address that, right? And, and, and in North Barrington, you'll see, we're kind of adding an exit onto Miller Road. Lines, there would be kind of a, if you looked at the plan, there would be kind of a new exit that would go on to Lake Cook and kind of running alongside those playing fields. These are all things we think are good. Our facilities committee will remind me to tell you, I know, that those are our plans. We obviously would have to seek approval from the appropriate villagers to get that done, right? That hasn't happened yet. We're not in that planning stage yet, but we would have to do that.
One question, is Perry Mills School somewhere oblique on the drawing board too? Should the entry exit traffic save distance?
Well, and that, we, you'll see, we have that, right, in, in the next bucket, right?
Same column?
No, it's the 250 column.
Next column.
Yeah. So, if you get to the next column, we're, at this point, you see we're, we're kind of done at the high school, right? But then we're saying at the middle school, and again, you know, at the middle school, all of our kids are going through the middle schools too at one point. They're going through one building or another. So, now you'll see, we're starting to add some fine arts renovations to the middle schools, and we're doing the kitchen and cafeteria stuff, along with a lot of site work, right? And, and the one that Mike was asking about reworking the existing drop-off is included there at Prairie. You'll also see at the. You'll also see at this level, we're now beginning to get to additional space that's needed at the elementary building, right? We've been lucky enough at this point that our enrollment has softened a little bit, where we're not busting at the seams at elementary. But then, we also know that elementary at some point could come back up. And I think the board has a pretty strong feeling, based on talking to community members, that programs like full-day kindergarten are really being embraced by the community. And we would like to be able to have enough space at the elementary level to be able to ensure that even in, with the growth of elementary enrollment, we can still keep full-day kindergarten, right? So here, we're talking about trying to add additional space within elementary buildings. We got to this point, and I will tell you, the board was, was a little concerned, right? That we hadn't really addressed the third middle school issue that I know is important to a lot of people in the community. So what we did is we added this last column, right? To say, okay, if we did build a third middle school, right? What happens is, is some of the renovations that you would do at Prairie and Station would take a slightly different flavor to it, right? So for instance, if I build a third middle school, I don't need to build additional classrooms at Prairie and Station, right? I still need to do some of the other renovations, right? So there is a plan that essentially says, I'll build a third middle school, I'll do other renovations at Prairie and Station to, you know, get, make it more equitable, so the three middle schools are more equitable in their services and their facilities. But the net impact, I say net impact, because you know, the roster of changes would be different. But the net financial impact would be, would be, you know, it's sixty million to build the middle school. And then, you'll see here what we showed is, is in that, in that plan, you would, you would put twenty-four million in the station, twenty-eight in the Prairie. But then if you subtract out what we have for those guys in these other two columns, you get kind of a net impact in total of seventy-three million. That's how you get to the three. So let me start first, any clarifications on this plan?
I have a question.
Yep?
When I clicked on the link online, there was this actually little box on the bottom. Is that just our wish list?
That was the thing about things that are not in here?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you want, if everybody wants to see it, I mean, look, we do have copy. The, the master plan, right, for all of the building, right, is kind of pretty big, right? And there's a lot of things, you're right, that don't make this plan. And it's not that we don't think that they're good, they just didn't make this, this couple of them, right?
Do you just need a bigger piece of paper?
We need a longer piece of paper, exactly.
I can get that for you.
They do. So yeah, that's a good point, right? Because look, I would say, and I'm, look, I think at the elementary level, I will tell you, I think, I will tell you that I think Sunny Hill and Huff need new buildings. Absolutely do, right? But at some point, we realized early in this process that you can't do everything, right? So we put that in there, because we, because it's still a value, right? But you're right, it's not prioritized here. Now, if what we hear from the community is that we want to go farther than this, we can certainly go farther than this.
I'm saying it for the community. Sunny Hill Middle School.
I, 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 we're.
I think it's worth noting that part of, part of the, initial part of the process that the board went through was, we were probably looking at more than half a billion dollars in needs that were, that were being presented by the team that we kind of acquired and asked, you know, a bunch of architectural professionals that went through and did a deep dive analysis on every building. And so what we tried to do is prioritize it to something that would be somewhat manageable for the community. I mean, we had, we had community members speak just earlier, saying that number one priority is flexible learning spaces. And then number two priority is to stay neutral in terms of tax impact. Well, the most expensive thing that we went through, when we were going through this process, is creating flexible learning spaces. So the, there's a lot of conflicting information that we had to try to process. So, we felt like, you know, putting the five-hundred-million-dollar bucket out there was just going to, you know, we were, we felt like we were doing the funeral exercise, like, you know, why are, why are we going to plan over here when we know that we're not going to, we're not going to be able to get there? We're not going to be able to get the support. Now, like Brian said, if, if we hear something totally different, we'd be happy to put the bucket together, because there's a lot of things that board members wanted, that were really tough discussions that went on for months, that we had to let go, right? There's an atrium for this building that was fabulous, that would be awesome for the kids that go through here, that is not here. And it was very expensive. So you have to, at some point or other, you have to kind of wrap your head around what's available, what you have, what you can do. And you're not going to be able to get that anywhere.
Is fixtures, furniture, and equipment, is that future-ready learning?
Yes, and you know what, I'm going to ask some of it, right? So it's not, it's not like structural changes, but it really is just kind of keeping some of our facilities the same, but giving tools to teachers to change the way they instruct. And I don't, I'm going to ask Dr. Harris to comment a little on this.
I will.
I will tell you, the staff has been a big proponent of this.
Yeah, we, one of the things when we looked, especially when the, when the financial picture started to play out, as everybody's commenting on, is, we want this to be an educational learning plan to, not just about the bricks and mortar, about what's going on instructionally in all these learning spaces, in all of the buildings. So that's why, I think from a staff perspective, and we've got several principals here today that can comment even more than me, about what's going on. Right now, we believe our facilities are, and our furniture in particular, is really limiting some of the things teachers can and want to do in the classrooms at every level. It's just very challenging. You know, we want, and we thought that would be a very quick way to be able to move instruction forward. And be able, because we've got the devices in hands of all kids, we've got a lot of ideas and different scenarios that we want to move forward on. But right now, our space just confines us in some of the furniture in the rooms. It's difficult, can't move it easy, it's, it's challenging, I mean, those types of things. So, that's why we felt, and it also is something, if you do it early on, no matter what we do, when we do any of this, that furniture will always be there. I mean, now furniture, you know, what's a lifespan of furniture? Ten, fifteen years, maybe? You know, it depends on, you know, what you buy and how you use it. But, you know, we know that, you know, however this may or may not play out, that furniture can be transformed. Right now, our principals in several buildings, we have several rooms here in the high school. We have isolated situations in every building across the district where principals have used building funds. We've used PTOs that have provided resources for us, different things, to create some concept spaces in every building. And we're starting to, because the teachers really want it. And so therefore, we know that's a huge priority, at least from the instructional side, to be able to move some of our thinking forward.
If I could just jump into, it's not simply, you're not going to see desks and chairs like you're familiar with. I toured some of, some schools that had some new furniture. We're talking about chairs that are on casters that have storage compartments underneath. In some cases, they have a desk that swings over. It's furniture that allows for quick change in the setup of the room. We toured, what high school? Any, a science lab, where they had.
Mundeline?
Mundeline, thank you, where they had casters. And the science teacher said, you know what, if it's a lab day, we group one way. If it's not a lab day, we say, you know, everyone has a color, you know, red over there, green over there. The kids just move their chairs. He said, and he said, I thought at first it was going to be, oh, this is playtime, you know, moving around. He said, it's not. And one of the things that our architect, with a lot of observations within our buildings, I think they observed a second-grade classroom, could be wrong about that, but said that it took until two o'clock in the afternoon for the kids to actually be seated in their desks. They were on the floor, they were working together. I see Cory shaking her head. I've got a second question.
Yeah, that's what they do, right?
It's different than what, what we were raised for.
So my son is in the ESC, which has a flexible learning space, and there's also problems. And so my, my, it's really hard if your kid has problems paying attention. And my son said this today, he's, my other son, but he's like, we need nooks and crannies.
Yes.
We need places for privacy, because if this whole thing is open and flexible and moving, not every kid thrives in that environment. My other son is not thriving in the open space environments, so I just, I put that out there. And so my other question is, have you guys, I know with input 220, there was a ton of research done on does this sweet patterns and research? So have there been research evidence that proves that this open learning space improves outcomes for the kids?
I would say it's inconclusive at this point. Has there been massive research studies? No. Have there been isolated scenarios where they've measured student achievement? Yes. But the problem is, every kid's different, you just hit the nail on the head. So you could look at the norms of what goes on, but you could, there's always the outlier, there's always the exception. And I, any teacher, and we've got several here, would tell you, that if you take a classroom of twenty, twenty-five kids, whatever it is, there is probably ten different learning modes sitting amongst those twenty-five kids. Every kid needs, you know, a unique, if you're going to maximize learning, they all need a unique structure in the instruction. Teachers, we, one thing we work with staff on, we've been doing it for a while, as to how to differentiate learning, right? And furniture is a key piece of that, the learning space is a key piece of that. You're absolutely right, some kids need a private, you know, space where it's, where it's not disturbed. Maybe an example, went to Stevenson High School on that same tour. They had, they had some open areas where kids had independent, you know, building, where the kids chose to go there. We also went into a space where it was total quiet. And it was interesting to see what, you know, how many kids chose each space. Some kids wanted total quiet with no distraction, and they chose to use that space during their flexible time. So that was just an example, you know, of a high school environment. I know I've seen that in elementary environments and middle school environments as well. Went up to Jordan Middle School in suburban Minneapolis and saw a school up there that was kind of more of an open learning flexible space. They had private scenarios set up in each of their pods and areas for kids that wanted to work independently on their own. So I think you have to build that into the design. I know that's going to be a significant piece of this if we do move forward with something.
I just want to make sure that if we're going to spend all this money on flexible learning space, that we, it's actually going to have the outcome we want.
Understood. We have the same questions. A, a, a good question. And hold on, I'm going to make a comment here on process today, because I want to, we need to get you guys, I want to get you out of here in about an hour or so, right? So we're going to have to do some quick hits here, right? So, because we got other stuff we want to do. So, it's, it's a great issue, right? But I do want to move on to any other questions that might be there. Yeah, go ahead.
So Brian, I guess my question is, you kind of laid out the prioritization of the columns. And I think this forum's great, but, so thank you for doing it. You said that, I think you said, high school first, that was the second column, right? So I, I'd like you to go a little deeper on that, because that's a huge prioritization.
Yes, you are correct.
So my question is, I think as you were thinking this through, right, we're all here for an ROI, like, right? The return on investment in our kids' education is a holistic thing, right? You've made the leap that high school first is the best ROI. Can you please explain why that is true?
That's a great question, because you're right, that's a key part of what you see here in the board's priority. And I'm going to let some of the board members try to give you an opportunity to chime in.
Well, part of the process at the initial stages was to try to determine where we wanted to start. And we started with the high school for several reasons. Number one, being in a unit district, I felt there was a great continuity in the education that the kids are receiving, because the articulation among the educators was ongoing. So we were able to control from a district level what's happening from kindergarten all the way through twelve. So as kids were going through, we had some control over what changes might be made from one building to the next, and what needs there were in one, in one building to the next. The high school level is where we're starting to get our students to transition from a, a very comfortable environment in 220 to higher learning. And so, and the needs are significant. The building is aging, so there were some significant needs here in getting this building up to speed. Then, as Brian mentioned before, I think that it was really important to all of us, because this is a community hub. I don't know that you mentioned that today, but we, we've talked about so many things at so many meetings, that one of the big things that resonated with everyone is, it's not just high school students that use this building. There are kids from kindergarten all the way through, you know, alumni that are.
The youth sports, the arts.
It's just, this building is constantly busy, it's incredibly, it's thoroughly used, and so.
I'm sorry, let me just ask you, kind of refocus that a little bit, I apologize for stopping you there. But when I look at the tasks though, the projects in the high school first box, a lot of them, to what your point is, community, sports fields are a lot of it. But then when I go to the middle school, I see classrooms, right? So I guess I'm kind of a little disconnected right now, right?
That's right.
The ROI is on improving education, and I've got five kids who've been through the schools, right? So I'm literally about an expert that knows nothing. My feeling is that classrooms is, and learning environments, right? So sports fields are great, my kids all play sports here, blah, blah, blah. But I'm, so I guess, could you kind of lean into that a little bit? Why, high school first, sports fields, middle schools, elementary second, classrooms?
You guys want to go, you want to leave? I, I'll give you my perspective, right? That, but I'm going to preface it by saying, that's exactly why we're having this conversation, right? So for instance, if, if, if that's something that you guys, that people feel strongly about, we want to see it up on your little sticky notes, you know, saying, I'd like to see more classrooms in this level, right? So that's why we're having this conversation. From my perspective, right, when I, when I build, remember, the classrooms at the middle school, I'm not building that many additional classrooms. I'm really just relocating them from the mobiles to the building.
Which is a huge improvement.
It is a huge, don't get me wrong, it is a huge improvement, it absolutely is, right? But, but I think that, and again, there's not a right answer to this question, right? This is a gut, right? And reasonable people can agree to disagree, which is why we're here, right? But, but some of the other stuff you're talking about is additional functionality, right? For the community, right, at the high school and at this building, right? And it's not to say that the middle school portion is not important, it is important, right? And to get rid of those mobiles is important. It's just the board put a slight addition. When you look at the rankings to do this, it wasn't a huge difference, right? I mean, it's a razor-thin margin on what you do where. You could easily switch a lot of these up, right? And if that's the feedback, that's what we want to hear.
Real quick, from engineering, I think it's, but this is where all your satellites, your elementary schools, your middle schools, all that, they're lined up here. You have your largest population here. So you kind of sort of want to get this done and out of the way first, because the satellites are going to be, I'm just using numbers, I have twenty thousand here, fifty thousand over here, they're going to be separated altogether. This is one of them, so this is done out of the way. You want to get your largest, you'll get your largest return on your investment on your largest purchase. You get it done here, everybody's coming here anyway. The other ones, from an engineering standpoint, that, that gets done second one, pardon me.
Yeah. Two views, both, both make sense, right? And that's, we're looking for some value judgments from you guys, yeah.
Hey, I'm happy to agree with the gentleman. You know, when I look at it, I mean, it's very obvious, you know, what is being prioritized for the community. But, and I understand, like, eventually all the students will see, will come through here. But, you know, they spend six years in an elementary school, and that's a significant portion of their life. And, you know, they spend three years at the middle school. Happy to see that, you know, in a relatively early phase of the priorities, you have removal of the mobiles, you have additional classrooms. And I think that, you know, thinking about this going to referendum, you know, you do need to think about, you know, what is the community going to value? Are they going to value additional instructional space? Or are they going to value parking lots, you know? And how is that going to read in a person who is a taxpayer but has no children in school? Or how is that going to read for new families coming into the area and are thinking about, well, my kid's going to go to elementary school first?
That's exactly, so that's the nature of this conversation. So how would you change this? And by the way, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have done this earlier, I did it with Dan. Please, when you, when you make your comments, try to introduce yourself, you know, to your friends and neighbors here. So I'm listening.
My name is Patricia Shisabu, I'm a, I have twenty girls in first grade at school. And I've come to a lot of meetings, and I understand, I have certainly witnessed the amount of discussion and back and forth that has gone through and given to the public. And I, I am fully appreciative of the challenges in, in kind of where they're spending money. And also the challenges. And also the challenges of trying to figure out, what is it that the community is going to value and is going to approve in referendum? So, but I do feel strongly that, you know, reading, like, you know, in the space where I was before I had children, and I would read referendums, you know, I would look at a lot of, you know, referendums that were prioritizing athletic fields, and I would be like, "Well, why would I pay for this?" You know, I don't know if the idea of my children are ever, you know, if, once I have children, if they're, if I'm ever going to use them. And so I'm trying to put myself into the space of a person who doesn't have children and doesn't have that experience of, you know, going through it. So for my part, I would certainly de-prioritize some of the more, like, specific athletic fields, you know, that function for one particular sport maybe, and go back to the list, you know. And, and I guess I am a little shocked to see, you know, Pop, Sunny Hill, Grove, you know, these spaces where we have space constraints not moved up in priority.
So let me ask you a question. I'm just gonna challenge it, just, 'cause this is what we do at the board. So, we can do both of those. It'll cost us about sixty million dollars, sixty, seventy million dollars. What sixty, seventy million dollars would you de-prioritize to do that? 'Cause we, with the board, we, we think that needs to be done too. It's just a matter of priority. So which, what, what would you move?
I agree that the Fine Arts Center at the high school is a priority. I, every, you're, you're, Joe is absolutely right. Every single child in this, in this program moves through that. But some of this, you know, adding the overhead bridges at Hart Grove, you know, at relocating the baseball fields, adding, you know, specific turf to, you know...
Okay.
And I realize it doesn't, you know, all add up, lack of, I mean, we even have, like, thirty-three thousand dollars still in the high school, in the second field, before we have, you know, classroom additions in the middle school, in the third column. You know, that's thirty-three million dollars. That's a big chunk of change.
Got it. Way in the back, Melissa.
Hi, Melissa, I'm Ashley. At the high school level, all these lists, are some of those, can we, can we cherry pick from that list?
Yes.
Can we, can we do the Fine Arts Center but not do anything below the boxes? Those kind of like...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, but what the board tried to do, we took the initial plan, 'cause that's, that was kind of the board's question too, early on in this process, once we realized that, that, you know, we got ten pounds to put in a five-pound bag, right? We said, "Okay, we gotta kind of pick and choose," right? So, so we asked for this disagreement. So yeah, each one of these, with the exception of those that are in a box, you gotta move together.
In a box, yeah, we have to go together. Yeah, 'cause, and, and I'm thinking of it a little bit from Patricia's perspective of, not only how you prioritize what we want to do, but how do we do that in a way that will garner support from enough parents and communities that whatever we present will be a successful referendum. And so that...
Amen.
You know, unfortunately, probably can't, you can't please everybody about how to make it powerful.
Exactly.
Does he get earmarked when the referendum happens?
I'm sorry?
Our team's earmarked in the referendum, so it will prioritize...
You know, so, right, so that's a style, it's an interesting ques, it's a style question, right? Historically, and I would say, well, I would just say, this board, right, if we do go forward with a referendum, and it's not certain that we will, right? That's why we're having this conversation. But if we did, I think this board's desire would be enough specificity, right, so that people knew, yeah. And once you put that kind of in that referendum question, we are kind of obligated to do that. So, I don't think we're looking for, I don't think we wanna give the schools a blank check to say whatever, right? So whatever we represent, it's gonna be used on, and that's what we wanna use it on. Yes?
You've all tracked the board. I have two kids at Northbury Elementary, a third one on the way to this.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Well, she's already out.
Oh, okay.
She's gathered, she's...
A good reminder, by the way, Happy Mother's Day to all the moms in the audience.
So, so just along the lines of this high school, middle school debate, if you are going to maybe relook at things and look at middle schools, obviously we see there's some middle school names and some of those school names are not there. Maybe the idea is, if we're doing middle schools or elementary schools, you start with all of them, and maybe that's our priority right now. Because, you know, the foundation is that, you know, you go down and go up, right? And I understand the reasons for the high school and, and a lot of these things, you can move things around, but we have to invest also in our future, if that's what we're doing. And the future is making the space better for our kids earlier on, if those are the really big issues. So elementary middle is where I would actually start. And I'd love to see what a revised plan with the middle school first and elementary school first looks like. Where is that in your, in your eighty-one-fifty?
So could I throw out a question then?
Yeah.
At the elementary level, if, did you have an opportunity to view the level diagrams that we have? Okay. So maybe go home and look at that, and then give us some feedback. Of, you know, the elementary, changes to our elementary buildings were very site-specific. Once you get past what's in the first column with that level one, which is also site-specific, sorry, the needs at the individual elementary schools are very different. And so it would be interesting, from the community's perspective, what you think should be done at the elementary schools.
Well, I'd go over to the principals and ask them what would benefit our students if they...
Well, we've already, and, so we've already done that, and so we've, we've, there's a list of things, you know, do we expand, do we, you know, what is it that needs to be done? That's what we tried to figure out in the year, you know, leading up to this. And we listened to everyone, and we kind of captured everything people said. And so you've got a wide range of ideas of things that you need. Some thought, you know, fix everything that needs to be fixed. We do have some schools that are antiquated and need definitely more money than other schools, you know.
Right.
Exactly. And so, so I, I would put back to you guys, what is it that we should do at the elementary schools?
Well, if you've got all of the information, obviously, from the principals, one of those things from each of those schools is going to impact education, right?
So that's what, and, yeah, and look, if you look, we, we, we have plans, it's, it's big dollars, right? The stuff that we would like to do at elementary, right, is easily fifty to sixty million dollars, 'cause we would do it for everyone, right?
Sure.
So again, the question is, if, if we wanna put fifty or sixty million of elementary in here, that means a lot of stuff gets pushed out.
Right. So then, okay, if, if the question is, what, how does it impact education? If that's what we're after, then how does converting practice field to impact the education here at the high school? I'm just, and I, I'm, I'm not agreeing either way. I'm just saying, if we're about education, that's our priority. I understand the importance of sports, but I'm also in education too, and I know that only one percent of students get full rides for sports in the country, right?
So, so here's what, I, I'll, I'll say, I'll, I'll, like, one quick comment, and look, we could talk, we could rip an hour out of this, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course.
But, the, the athletic fields, right, serve not just our, not just the high school students, right, but the community youth, right? And there are lots of educational studies that link involvement in co-curriculars, athletic, fine arts, clubs, things like that, other things, right, that connect kids from a social-emotional perspective to the classroom, where those kids learn better, right? We don't have athletics, right, just because we like athletics, right? The reason why schools have athletics is because it's a way for kids to create communities and be attached from a social-emotional perspective. Our, our Barrington two twenty priorities are not just learning, reading, writing, arithmetic, right? It's trying to address the development of the entire kid and the social-emotional being, right? And our co-curriculars achieve that, and there's plenty of studies to support that. That it helps the education process by having the kids have those connections. So, it's not totally disconnected. It's not a black or white. Now, that said, I don't, other hands, I wanna make sure, 'cause we're gonna break here for a little bit to do the sticky note exercise. You go ahead.
Hi.
Hi. Introduce yourself.
Wendy Farley, former member of the board. Kids at all levels of the school district, elementary, middle school, and high school. When we started this process years ago, we talked a lot about how can we make the best learning environment for our kids. And I appreciate the time that you could put into this, and I so appreciate the, the effort that you've gotten to so far, because I know the number of hours that each of you have spent doing this. As I look at the chart, I see that, you know, the, the biggest bucket by far in the chart is sports and the auditorium at the high school. It adds up to forty-five million dollars. It's sixty-eight percent of the budget here for the high school. And I feel like somehow, how this started to create the best learning environment for our kids has been sidetracked by a focus on the rebuilding a thirteen-point-five-million-dollar auditorium and in increasing the value of our sports facilities at the high school. And I feel like we've gotten off track. If you take the forty-five million dollars and you spread it across the board for improving the learning environment for kids at every level in our district, I think you would have a better outcome. And I think you would have more support from the community, because this is a huge chunk of money, forty-five million dollars is a lot, to spend on turf fields and the auditorium, where I would like to see a reverse of that, instead of, you know, sixty-eight percent being spent on the sports fields and the auditorium, reduce that, so that you have a thirty percentile percentage being spent on extracurriculars, and then seventy percent being spent on the classroom itself and improving the classroom across the board at all levels of our school. Because that's forty-five million dollars to go a long way.
Great comment. Go ahead.
Um, so I'm Charlotte, I got kids in seventh and eighth grade this year. So we're out twenty-twenty-two. And so, a couple of things kind of run along with what you're doing. Totally agree with going with the high school first for a few reasons. First of all, looking at things selfishly, when my kids are out in twenty-twenty-two, that's when things are gonna start actually rolling in and happening. So as parents who have preschoolers, elementary school, and so forth, that's where they're gonna actually see it with their kids. So I totally understand that side of it as well as, when you start at the high school, that's where they are at the end of their education with two twenty. And if you do it at the middle school or elementary school, they have it there, and it's almost like they go backwards in high school before they go on elsewhere. And I think that would be a hard thing for those students to make that transition and going forward with new technology, new spaces, and everything else, and then going backwards on that one. Definitely agree with a couple of things too on the classroom spaces. I've got kids at station now, and the mobiles there, honestly, those need to be evened up, in my opinion. When you're looking at doing all of these renovations to make everything, I mean, I'm not gonna say icing on the cake, but like, we really need first class, and then you still have mobiles at both middle schools. To me, that's a really big disconnect, and that's really hard to support that side of it. So I'd really like to see those go forward. And then there's mobiles that are going in at Grove this next school year. So, I don't know what enrollment looks like long-term, the reduction to Grove. So I don't know if this is a year or two ago, and then the mobiles aren't needed anymore, or Grove is looking at having the need for mobiles long-term, or if that means that there needs to be redress if you have to use the elementary school. But to be putting mobiles in, when you're talking about studying this much money, it's really hard to support.
Yeah, the, the mobiles at Grove are intended to be short-term. What the solution is, I don't know. I think it depends a little bit on the outcome of this conversation. You'll see there's four additional classrooms at Grove in the red column, right?
They are, but the red column, I mean, honestly, as I'm looking as a taxpayer, that green column is where the big focus is. So moving that up and moving that forward...
Amen. So that's what we're trying to understand here.
Yes.
I, I hear you.
Again, I think I agree with a lot of comments. The parking is great, and moving the parking and changing the turf fields are great, but that focus on the classroom and getting some of those things done earlier, that's where I would move things down, because you're talking about some of the trade-offs too.
Other comments or questions? Yep.
I just have a question about the, the hundred-and-fifty, oh Cheryl Barzal, sorry.
Yeah.
I have a freshman in a, in a middle school at station. A hundred-and-fifty million column, there's a line item for PE and wellness addition for ten million dollars.
Yeah.
I remember hearing about a weight room and dance studio, a couple of things like that, and it's a pretty large, you know, line item. So I'm just wondering if you could expand upon, what is the wellness part? I don't remember hearing about that. And is that something that is not just for the athletic program, but for all the kids in the school?
It is. It's more like, think of the, and it's really kind of an addition to our field house, right, with kind of indoor gyms, athletics. The, the actual, the fitness, like with equipment and stuff like that, is a different line item, right? But this is more just additional indoor gym space for PE, winter sports, that kind of stuff.
But it would be utilized by all the students.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Other questions? That, Melissa?
I'm just going along, does it be a classroom space?
Yeah.
At the high school, which of those line items in additions and renovations would you consider instructional space, classroom space?
Well, it would be the future-ready classroom renovation. Let me...
Is that a hundred-and-fifty million?
No, it's in two hundred.
Two-hundred million.
Right. I mean, obviously, the library renovation, I think it's to renovate it as not classroom space, but learning space.
Right. So I'm looking at the hundred, it's a green bucket, you know?
I really...
I think the Fine Arts Center would be it, right?
Yeah.
Because, you know, remember, the Fine Art, the Fine Arts Center, right, it, well, it's building a new one. And then there's, there's a, the auditorium renovation, which is kind of a companion piece, which is renovating our existing auditorium. That creates fine art space and large group instruction space, right? Our existing auditorium gets used for instructional purposes too, so...
Yeah. So that you'd consider instructional space?
Yeah.
I would say too, though, I, you know, we have daily PE in our, in our schools. And so PE is more than dodgeball, you know, sometimes it's health class, and it's, it's a classroom time too. So don't, please don't lose sight of the fact that PE is actually an instructional part of our day.
If I just look at it as a fine arts center, then maybe that PE wellness addition, assuming that addition includes instructional space for PE.
Mm-hmm. Other quick, okay. We got, okay, I have a rumor to do, just so everybody knows. Five more minutes, right, 'cause I, I wanna make sure that we, look, we're, I wanna try to get you out of here by ten forty-five-ish. That said, we're all gonna stay around, and we'll keep chatting for anybody who wants to keep chatting. And the way in the back, I can't see. Blue hat, whoever is.
Hi, I'm Chris Garrett. I've got three kids at Roswell Road. We're all having a blast. The, just real quick, I just, I, I agree that some of the priorities are on whack. Same time, at the same time, I'd be, I think some of this is a little bit incomplete in that, are these twenty-year, twenty-year bond projections that you put in there? And then, inside of that, you'll have, what, like, four, probably four teacher negotiations in that estimated range, right?
Some number, yes.
Some number, right? So, obviously, I think, I think we can all agree that the biggest impact on our kids is the teachers, right, in terms of their learning capacity. So, what types of other projections in terms of educational impact? Is there any way to layer any projections for teacher costs, pension costs, post-credit medical costs that you're gonna be needing to account for in the overall budget? And how does that weave into this? And so I look at this somewhat incomplete in that if we could include the actual teaching impact that we're gonna need over the next five or ten years to incorporate into that, how do we, how do we look at that? Because that's really what we're talking about, is the total educational impact on our kids. And we're gonna probably significantly increase those costs. So when you look at this all together, you look at the taxpayer impact, for example, it's potentially off based on the different...
I'll, I'll try to give you a quick answer. Obviously, the details can go longer. But, you know, our tax bill as taxpayers is really comprised of two numbers, right? One is what's referred to as our operating rate, right? The operating rate is, is what we end up paying as taxpayers to the schools to support the annual budget, right? The second half of our taxpayer bill, right, in terms of what goes into it, is the bond service, right? So this is addressing that second part of our tax bill. The first part of the tax bill, right, I think the board remains committed, you know, to not seeking an operating rate increase and just kind of living within our means, right, on that operating side, right? We're not, I, this board at least is not interested in pursuing an operating rate increase. So all we're talking about is just that second part of that bill, you know, that seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty dollars a year for a five-hundred-thousand-dollar home that is due to come off, right? We're not talking about increasing others. So any, whatever, whatever teacher contracts would have to go out and forward. Now, again, future boards are free to do whatever they want, but I think this board has, has a history and continues to believe that, that those teacher contracts have to live within our means of that second part of the tax bill. We're not asking... We're not asking for an increase. Other questions? Yes?
I'm letting you know from the teacher at Sunny Hill. But I would like the feedback from, all the teachers, feedback from parents about how important the elementary schools are. So just looking at like our oldest buildings, Huff Grove and Sunny Hill. If you look at online, the level three renovations for each of those schools would total less than the fifty million. And like, you can give us flexible furniture, but without that space to use that flexible furniture, it's, it's like a, you know, it's a perk to have a furniture. But especially when I go and visit other elementary schools and their classroom sizes are huge. Yeah, you can move students all around in all that space, but with limited space in the older buildings, it really limits what teachers can do regardless of what furniture you put in there. So I appreciate the parents' feedback on how important elementary school is.
Other questions? I saw some other hands.
I just wanted to quickly echo the distinction between with the Fine Arts Center being, it's not an extracurricular. It's, it's definitely an educational space. I was just there yesterday with my Sunny Hill choir and it was booked eleven hundred times in the last calendar year.
Yeah.
Eleven, in one year.
It's crazy.
It is, it is constantly being used. It is not an extracurricular space. It is a vital place that the entire community, every kid will go into at some point in their careers, so.
I, could I, see if there's more questions?
Yeah, we shall have one.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So one question is, we have for this, you know, two, three-word descriptions of what the different items are. Is there somewhere that details more what they are? Because as much as I'm putting my own interpretation to what I think those items include, it's kind of hard to make a true value judgment on what the prioritizations are and should be without more detail on what does that mean?
So in some cases, those leveled drawings.
Right, some of them have more detail, but I don't want to miss, do something.
And there are labels that, that some of us that have been working with them will understand. So I, it's hard to put the detail because you'd have a paragraph under every single one.
We may need to do that, though. I think, I think that's good feedback for this kind of interact. Maybe, I mean, we don't have that, but I think maybe we need to spend the time and try to develop that to be a little.
We have not done design work, so we don't have huge detail.
No, but you can put a couple of sentences together just to help.
Like the intention of the space.
Right, exactly. I think that would help a lot in terms of developing the prioritizations.
I know, it's good feedback.
I don't think that it works necessarily on this sheet because it's already really busy. When I had it on my computer, I literally had.
Yeah, I know. We've all been there, we got.
To have some of our, if you were like clicking in details, you can see it, that would be a huge help. It's like all the kind of work.
I like it.
To your point, I just wanted to provide a little context to something on here that I've had a lot of questions about. And it's in the two hundred and fifty million dollar column, but it's on the bottom where it says sensory therapy rooms. Someone asked me if we were doing spas, you know? So I want to just explain that a little bit. You know, there's a lot of students, many, many of our students receive special services in one kind of enough or another, whether it's speech, wide variety of things, behavior. And that's, our buildings aren't built for, to accommodate teachers working with small groups of kids. And so this is to provide those spaces at all of our elementary schools that would allow for interventions, even just a student that might be just having a bad day, to be pulled out and meet one-on-one with a staff member. It also provides some space for those staff members to keep their stuff. Because right now, many of them pull little suitcases or hoes or big bags around because there, many of them are traveling from school to school. But this hits the social emotional piece a lot. So I just want to, it's not a spot, just wanted you to know.
Because that was in level one and now it's moved to level four. Originally, that, that, that sensory classroom was ahead of future-ready learning.
And that's why we're having the conversation.
Yeah, right, right.
That's why we're having the.
It moved.
Right.
Well, and so, so when we, when the core team built those leveled models, please don't mistake, well, I'll just say, when we built those, it was a way that we, we did it in a way that we felt that they could build upon one another. And so in some cases, there was very strong feelings about, yes, this needs to go first, like the level ones, that seemed pretty obvious. The other ones, in some cases, got plugged into levels because it fit with the scope.
Right.
Does that make sense? Okay.
So here's what we're going to do. This is kind of our first little group activity, right?
Can I, can I just ask one?
Sure, just be quick.
I'm sorry. Someone mentioned the nooks and crannies of the open space learning that some of the younger kids would really need that nicely. Would those sensory rooms be part of that or would that be a different kind of nook and cranny?
I think that for, what I heard when I went to many of the elementary conversations we had in the fall was that that would be good for some kids, but that teachers, individual classroom teachers still would like spaces within their room where, to address the needs of different learners.
And do we have those spaces?
I think that the, the thought was that those spaces could be created and that the needs could be met. I mean, I guess I would defer that maybe back to Brian.
Correct. So if you would like, this is the time, this, we're going to use those little sticky notes, right? If you want to document an idea you have, a concern you have, or for instance, if it's, you know, you might want to affirm, I like this approach, or I would, I would change the priorities in this column to reflect whatever it is you want to reflect, right? I'd ask you just to document that on the note and stick it up in kind of the appropriate column, right? We'll do five minutes. I'm going to, we'll do a quick five-minute break so everybody can kind of post up what you want. We'll then take a look at it and try to characterize them a little bit. And then when we come back, we want to talk a little bit more about the value, the tax, the taxes and the value. And focus a little bit more on that and then we have another exercise and then we'll continue to answer questions. Does that make sense? Okay, I am setting my phone timer for five minutes. To talk about what? Well, we're going to see. No, they're putting, they're posting them up there. Yeah, okay.
Oh, you're really excited. Still enjoying his middle school. Thank you today. He didn't say he had any, but she does. The first day of his country side, he's like, mom, you're saying that you're willing to make changes in what is life, in what is important. And he's like, I don't know, those other kids are just going to get lost in the middle of the school. You've got to learn the hard way.
Okay, we're over time. Two more minutes, finish up. Two more minutes and then we're back.
Did he break my, okay, I thought it was a ride or a ride fight.
They did ride fight together, yeah.
It was cute. I think Emma did a double take on me, like, I know you, but. Oh, that was so good. So did she, like, did you take her bike?
I did.
Okay. Yeah, that was the only one. Oh, yeah. Drop it all. Yeah.
Yes, we're hurrying back in their seats.
Yeah, they get.
Activities included. We do need a boat. Okay, let's keep going, guys. Take the change. We know, we know. You ready? Penny's going to do the lights like they do in this theater. Intermission over. Okay, so we have one of our talented administrators that's kind of at each one of these boards, right? And they are tasked with trying to kind of summarize or characterize the sticky notes that went up. So Steve, I see you're at the first floor. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so summarizing, I think the theme is that safety and security should be a prior, should be prioritized in this, in this process. Essentially, comments about moving all of that forward. There was some commenting on making sure we invest in our infrastructure and support that. And then also making sure that we're laser focused on instruction throughout the district.
Okay. You have a watch. Did you see what happened there?
She's furrier a blooper, she else has two. They must have sticky that there.
Okay, how would you summarize it?
All right, I'm trying to just, I was starting to categorize actually, put things together. Several notes about fine arts and I think there's a couple more in here about keeping fine arts and making sure fine arts stays at this level.
Okay.
Then there's three and I just saw a couple more about learning space over athletic fields.
Right.
And then there's notes on making sure that, don't forget the elementary buildings. So the elementary things moving up to this category. Sunny Hill Huff Grove, Sunny Hill Huff Grove, so there's a lot of notes about that. There's in the Fine Arts Center, there's Sunny Hill again. So those are kind of the big three themes, I would say, that kind of emerged on this board.
Good.
If I were to do the same thing with themes on this board, I would say that the first theme is that there's a lot of different things down here.
Okay.
It was with data. At this level, we're to that point, I think. And then the other two, I would say, one of them is definitely about middle school mobiles, making sure that those are an earlier priority. And then also a lot of comments too about just in general, future-ready learning being ahead of some of the other things that are on the priorities.
Okay, good. By the way, I, I should have challenged you guys too, like, please introduce yourself to the group. So let's go back because not everybody knows you guys, so.
I'm Steve McWilliams, I'm the high school principal. Craig LaCombe, assistant super for operations in K-12 schools.
And I'm Matt Fuller, assistant superintendent for technology and innovation in the district.
Austin Johnson, I'm the principal at North Barrington Elementary.
Cynthia, I'm Rondales Maxwell, I'm the principal at Sunny Hill. Thank you so much all for coming today.
Yeah. Okay, so Austin, your board's up next.
Okay, similar themes, actually, all the way, it sounds like on every board. But on this one, it was more about maybe moving elementary work sooner, focusing in on improving educational, elementary education prior to some of the athletic fields. Certainly, the classrooms at, at the level, elementary levels, moving those up is a priority. And then food service came into light here, but there was a mix there, some for, some against.
And the theme repeating on this board is elementary, level three elementary, fifty-five million. Can we move this off the dream list to a realistic priority? House cafeteria gym. And then the only other comment is about the new admin building. How does it feed into the newer needs for space, et cetera?
How, I'm sorry, how does it fit into what?
Into newer needs for space, et cetera, et cetera.
So to answer that one, because that did come up, right? When we, if you look at the original master plan, the infrastructure of our James Street administrative building was. Um, when we, if you look at the original master plan, um, the infrastructure of our James Street administrative building was concluded to be really bad, which we all, all know, right? Um, and so it was a priority, you know, that was articulated back in the early stages of this master plan, um, to do something with that building and get out of it and then use that space to either repurpose it for another district activity, uh, or sell it, whatever, we still have to figure that out, right? But when the opportunity came to purchase this building, uh, at Gatorade, um, the board decided that not only was it a fair price, but it, it addressed that need to get out of James Street. Uh, I think there was a couple, a couple of years ago, the facilities committee came to us and said, you know, the windows need to be replaced and it's gonna be three or four hundred thousand dollars to do it. The building is, is not worth many times mu- much more than that, right? So at that point, we said, yeah, okay, this is kind of the end of that building. Um, in terms of additional space, it gives us certainly an appropriate admin building, but we also gain a lot of professional development space. Um, we have a, a kind of a, uh, a weakness in the district where honestly, sometimes when we're trying to do professional development work with our teachers and our staff, sometimes we gotta go to the library, 'cause we just don't have space.
Our district.
When, when we open that up and we'll do tours in that library, you'll see, they've got large corporate training space in there with internet connectivity and all this, so we've now got some large product development space and large meeting spaces that we don't have today, right? So, uh, now, would it ever be student instructional space? That would be a decision in, in the future. I will tell you, one of the things that the board valued about that space is if, again, this building, and here at the high school, is kind of limited, right? We're landlocked here, right? If we ever got over capacity here, could you use that as additional high school instructional space? You could, and then we'd have to find another spot for admin, but that's kind of more of a long-term issue. The short term gives us a good admin space and it gives us a lot of good, large product development, or project, or professional development space.
Can I add to the PD space? It does actually impact instruction here.
It does.
I can't tell you how many times this room, which is a student space, and other rooms within the building here have to be, um, dedicated to professional development because we just don't have room. And we have to take the purpose of this space and move it somewhere else, or move our students elsewhere, so it, it will help us in, in terms of taking our purpose built space and then having them available, so.
Okay.
It does relieve some stress here.
Good. Yep.
Can you just remind, um, everyone how that purchase was funded?
So it's one point one million dollars. The board is also currently looking at some costs that would be necessary to make it, you know, to, the stuff we would wanna do to make it a little bit better for us, that, that budget might end up being another million dollars. Um, that's coming out, you know, again, uh, if you look at our school budget, right? We have an operating budget, and then we have a kind of a capital projects budget, right? Um, we currently have about nine million dollars in that capital budget, right? So that money will come out of those dollars. It's been a prioritized facility need by our facility committee for a long time, so it's coming out of that side of the budget.
That's not an annual budget, that's a stack, that's a year.
For, for, it, it's meant for those big one-time costs. Joe and Penny, every year prioritize the stuff we do in the summer and they use those dollars to do that. Other questions? Any, any reaction to the, to the comments on the sticky notes? Okay, so here's what I'm gonna ask. You guys figure out how you wanna kind of characterize, or how you wanna end up, if you wanna put them somewhere else on the board, or take them off, or whatever you're gonna do. And I would ask, I think this would be the time to take the, the dots and start distributing those. So. Yes. And so, um, as they pass out the dots, I'm gonna ask you to take a red, yellow, and green dot, right? And we're gonna have a conversation before we do the exercise, but here's what the exercise is, right? And, and it's, and, uh, so what we're, what we're trying to get some feedback from the community on is the value proposition that's represented up there, right? At the various budget levels, right? And you know what the tax impact is, right, to us as taxpayers, um, to try to get a sense on comfort levels, right? So, so we're gonna, what we're, what we're gonna try to do is ask you guys to say, okay, where are you comfortable, right? If you're comfortable at one of these levels, right, you put a green dot on, right? If you get to a point where you go, what, that's just too far, there's no way I can support, even with the value that's here, it's just not anything from a tax perspective, or, you know, there's just not enough value there, there's no way that I would ever go there. That's a red dot, right? Now, you might have something between your green and red dots, where you say, I might be able to get here if there's that reshuffling of priorities, you know, or something like that. That's a yellow dot, right? So, for instance, if you are in favor, and I talk to a lot of us that are, right, in favor of saying, I don't wanna do any more investment in the schools, you guys find the way you are, right? I'd rather take all that tax savings as a taxpayer, right? If that's the way you feel and a number of us do, right, you would take that red dot and put it on that first board, right? Because that eighty million, right, is objectionable to, right?
Everybody needs three dots.
No, everybody.
Brian, everybody's gonna need three dots.
Everybody, I'm sorry? No, no, by column, by column.
Okay.
Not by line it, this way, so you just need one red, one green, one yellow.
Take one dot.
Brian, are you asking us to comment on that, that, that top level?
I'm gonna, I, yes.
You know, like, are we comfortable with an increase of a hundred and ninety-two dollars into our taxes? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, so for instance, and, and I'm gonna, so, I'm, so, little bit more clarification, right? One of the things we've heard from this group, right, remember, we got two more of these we're gonna do, right? Um, one of the things we've heard from this group is there's a little bit of reshuffling on this that you would like to see. And I get that, so it gets to be a little bit hard, right, 'cause you may say, I could support this only if there's a reshuffle. I get that. So, um, I'm trying to figure out how to do, so, um, you know, here, let's true that, I'm, I'm, I'm making this up on the fly. If, if you still have pens, right? If you put, put a little asterisk in the middle of your red dot, if you could only support it if priorities are reshuffled.
So if you don't agree with, like, turf field.
Right, so for instance, if you agree with the one fifty level, right, almost as is, you put the green dot up there. If you put, if you say, I can agree with one fifty, but I need to see the priorities reshuffled, put a little asterisk or something in the middle of that dot. Or the, yeah.
But how are you gonna know what thing we don't agree with in the.
Well, we got the little, we got the comments, we got those comment cards, right? And I think we have a pretty good sense of this group, right? I don't know what the next group, the next groups might be different, I don't know, right? So we gotta take the whole thing. But we got the comment cards to know what people wanna see, right? But, look, the hard part of us as a board and as a community is to try to figure out where we're gonna be on this, right? To the point that was raised earlier, if you guys all end up putting green dots on three thirty, right, then you're telling the board, you know, maybe we should even be looking at something higher. If you put a bunch of red dots on the eighty, that tells us it's something else, right? So we're just trying to, you've got a sense, we also know, right, that any budget is kind of tied to the value of what's there, right? So we're trying to just get a broad sense on where people can support, where they can't support, and where it's kind of in the middle. Now, if you are, and I'm making this up, right, if you support one fifty, but you don't support two hundred, you're not, you're gonna use a yellow dot, right? You're gonna use a green dot and a red dot right next to each other. So you're only gonna use the yellow if there's something in between your green and red that you go, I could, I could get there, but I'm not sure. Does that make sense, first on the exercise?
Yes.
Okay, now, discussion among the community on how you're processing this, your own feelings on this, yeah?
This is hard for me, because I tend to support most school referenda, because, you know, um, how I would wanna see it prioritized might be different than what's up here. But, um, I wonder, because things are gonna change, I think it's, and we've already talked about a lot of shit, you may just think it might be hard for us to say, I support this level based on what's on the, um, on the list.
So put that asterisk there, put that asterisk there.
Just put an asterisk on it.
Just to show it's a reshuffle, or if you are uncomfortable, don't do it.
Brian, aren't you really asking, how much are we willing to spend?
Right.
Yeah, period, and then figure out the priorities.
Yeah, my question.
That could, that's not a reasonable interpretation?
That's sort of, that's.
But, but I wanna be very careful, that's not exactly what we're asking, right? And I wanna be careful to explain why. It is illegal for me to ask you that. Okay? As board members, right, we are not allowed to ask the community, would you support a referenda?
You're, you're not, you're asking, how much are we willing to spend?
He's not allowed to answer.
But what, what I'm, we're, we're trying to, where's a board trying to get a sense, I mean, look, if we're gonna do any of this, it has to be a referendum, right? We can't survey the community to say, would you do this amount on a referendum, right? That's just not against, you can't use district resources for political means, right? So this, this becomes an interesting dance, right? Because you know what, so what we're really, but I gotta tell you, what we're really asking for is kind of like a high, medium, low priority, or your value, right? You, you get the sense for the kind of projects, whether they're this group or a reshuffled group, you get a sense of what it is, right? We as a board are just trying to understand, are we in the range that makes sense? Are we too high, are we too low? This is part of the feedback we're asking, right? I mean, if you say, for instance, if you said, I like everything on his, plus a lot of stuff at elementary, with new buildings and all that, and you're willing to support, you think the value's there, you're gonna put your red, your green dots there. If you don't think any of this is worth investment, you're gonna put your red dot.
So, can I ask this question? I see people, a complete sheet of every color dot. Truthfully, I think we're looking for every individual, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, one dot.
One red dot, one green dot, one yellow dot. I can understand if they're each, I can understand.
One, it's just a one, so for instance, on those boards, on those boards, you'll see.
See, it might be confusing.
I know, you see three columns. Not on each item, right? On each board, so each board has those three columns. The first column would be your, a green dot, this, put your yellow dot in the middle column, your green dot, or your red dot, and the last, green, yellow, red, right? Just like.
So each board gets one dot.
Each board gets one dot from everybody who wants to do it.
I can, I can go, I can go all the way up to here, I can support this level of giving, okay? I can support this level of taxes, so, but I can't support, I can't support this one.
Right, so you would put a green dot on that one.
There, I can support the green one, I can, I can do this.
You can, but what I would ask you to do is to put the, just so we, 'cause it'll be easier for us to process it all visually.
Right.
If you put the green dot in the first column, the, the yellow dot in the middle column, and the red dot in the last one.
He said he could support them.
There's three columns here, right? Right? So if you're gonna put a green dot on a board, put it in this column.
Oh, I got you.
If you're putting a yellow dot on a board, put it in this column. A red one, put it here, it'll just be easier for us.
Just red, green, yellow, red.
Yeah. Okay, go.
Um.
Because then we should get a sense of the trust.
Yeah. Um, is it possible, yeah? We'd have to decide if that's something we would wanna do.
I mean, if you, if you didn't really have this, like, I'm questioning all these stuff and all this stuff that's underneath that, people don't know what the budget is. I mean, I'm, I'm doing this.
Our, our, our challenge is to try to, let's say, five hundred people do that, how do we process that?
Well, you're aggressive, right? You're like, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because what we're not looking for is.
But the problem, the, the, what's your first thing? You lost. Part of the problem is that input is just based on the people who chose to do that and shit, it may not be representative. Well, it's a, it's a good idea, we'll revisit that conversation.
Let's try to finish up. Are we done?
Yeah, it's hard, too. They do. Okay, let's, can we all sit down? I wanna take ten minutes and look. So this is interesting, right? If we look at the visual, if I understand this group that's here, right? We have kind of support with some concern going all the way up to two fifty. Well, you get some support three thirty, the big reds come up at three thirty, you get some reds at two fifty, but there's more greens at two fifty than reds.
And yellow combined.
Yeah. That's interesting. Is anybody surprised by this?
Well.
Or, or comments?
I, I guess my only question is, there's about twenty-eight people here right now.
Yep.
Out of how many thousands?
Lots, right.
And this is going to be your more engaged and more supportive group that is coming to you.
Yes.
So how much of the grain of salt do you take, what this group, and the next group, and the next group put into this versus?
A lot depends on the commonality of.
The common.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I know, there's a lot of people that have told me they don't care what it is, if it were five dollars, they would still not support the referendum at this point.
I think you're right.
And that concerns me, 'cause I don't wanna have, whatever referendum is, fail. And I just, I, I don't, I, I'm surprised if there's a country that, that I'm thinking about and I get it, I'm just, I, I don't want.
Can we show up to the other ones too?
You can't!
Please do.
They're open, they're public meetings, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll see you there. We'll just convince everybody.
There you go.
But don't forget to call your friends.
That's right.
We live near Chicago, right?
So, we're, we're worried too, and the, the bottom line is, the more you get to know all of the facilities in our community, the more important this issue should be to everyone. My, my son is the youngest of my three, and is about ready to graduate from Barrington High School. I'm very proud of the education that my kids got, I've been an educator for thirty years, and I gotta tell you, you know, it's a huge investment for our community, but it's super important. It's not only important to the property values of, of our homes, it's important to the kids that live here, and we have a responsibility to educate our children, that's the bottom line, and so. And so, of course, we're with you. And how do you get to thirty-nine thousand rooftops? That's the dilemma that we deal with as a board. We're gonna go ahead and make the sausage publicly, and we're gonna go through, and we're gonna try to prioritize and listen to people, take their feedback, but we need to get to those naysayers and say, you know.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna add one more comment, just so you guys know, right? I wanna say this, right? Once we, once a board, right, a school district places this, a question, if we do, on a referendum, right? This, at that point, it really becomes a community issue, not a board and administrator, right? By law, the board and the administrator can only talk, we can't campaign for it, we can't, I mean, we can only provide information in response to questions, right? So, you know, successful efforts, right, to, to get the word out and everything can, can only be done a little bit with the board, but usually there's a community group, right? That gets formed to support it, right? I know that group hasn't formed yet, but at some point, there's gonna need to be a group of community members, hopefully, that might come together and say, we can support this, right? Now, at this stage of the process, all we're trying to figure out is what it is, right? And where the community can support it, right? And the other question that we're struggling with a little bit, right, is, is we can, you know, we could potentially put a referendum question on the ballot in the fall, right? To do that, though, we would have to make a decision in August, right? In the middle of the summer. We're not sure that that's enough time, right, to get everybody. The next opportunity would be the spring of, of two thousand and nineteen, right? And then the next opportunity after that would be the spring of two thousand and twenty, right? So, that's the other thing we're trying to get a sense from, from people. And what I hear today, by the way, is that you guys would like us to still think about switching around some priorities, so we're probably not ready yet, right? To, to go to the community and say, this is what we wanna do. There may be more work, so that's what we're trying to figure out.
And then Brian, you know, in earlier discussions we had, talked about, you know, the possibility of having multiple referendums. But, the sense that I'm getting from this is that it looks like Rethgo is one, right? Which would have the highest priority items. It's assuming it's.
That's a, that's a conversation still has to happen, yeah.
I guess I would step back and just say, you know what? This started because we wanted to make a facilities plan, right? A, sort of like a strategic plan, right? And it's a multi-year plan, so, those are decisions we still have to make, to Brian's point. But, you know, it's, these are things that we would like to see over a period of time, if possible. You know, with all plans, you get to year three and, well, gee, your floor, floor looks different than it did four years ago. Maybe we should tweak things. And so I think that we do that all the time now, but your question about how many questions is available?
Yeah, sure.
My name is Jessica Saha, and I have two children in elementary school, at various elementary schools. We're about to transition to schools. So, I think a few people, as a sideline comment, had mentioned to me that they had been to Sunny Hill for whatever reason, and they've been to some of the other schools that are in dire need of repair. And I agree, as somewhat new to this area, I've lived here for three years, it's been over three years right now. I am unfamiliar with some of the elementary schools that are older. I just haven't had a chance to get inside them to know what they look like. And I think in order to garner support from, you know, the pockets that we all do have and we kind of live in and work in, I think it's important to really show what is this going to. And I know, you know, drawings aren't really probably the answer per se, but I think showing the disparity of, here's a twenty-year-old building, and here's a, however old some of the other buildings are, and showing what those benefits or pictures, here's a before, you know, and here's what we're hoping to change, and here's how this will impact the student at that particular level. I think that's very key in garnering support in general. Just as a side, I don't know if any of these are going to be done, even though I'm in elementary school. I don't know if any of these are gonna be done before we, you know, exit high school. However, I would say, in elementary school is generally when you get your Chicago population moving out to the suburbs. And although, you know, Barrington rests on us florals on how awesome the education is, I know that we're looking specifically at elementary schools first and then moving on. So that's kind of a key factor. So I think showing, in summary, showing support, I, I would love to see what the other facilities look like.
Yeah, I, well, I'm gonna flat out for a sort.
Can I have something else?
Sure.
So I, if you went up, I was in the red column, I've got two kids at Huff's. And I don't, I've been on other committees, I've seen a lot of the other schools, and I can tell you absolutely right now that we do not have an equitable education across all of preschool. With the kids that, like Mark Barrington and Barbara Buggles have, where space and facilities is ten times what we have at Huff's. We don't even have any grass at Huff's. And I don't, I don't see Huff on the list. I know! I keep coming with these.
So it, yeah, it.
Sunny Hill as well, I wanted to just say, they have, they have such an under, that is our underserved population. Those people that, in that community, those are the people that need our help, right? Like, we, let's give them a good education, let's do what we can, let's support them. They, they need help.
Good, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let our facilities committee try to chime.
Just to address the, what I heard to be the initial concern regarding data that would help you to become more familiar with each of the sites, that is all available as part of Blueprint Two Twenty. That was like in the initial stages of what we did. So, to address the equity piece, you're absolutely right. The buildings were built in different times, some of them in different eras. Some of them are locked into the spaces that they exist in. Some of them are designed to be two-section schools, others are four-section schools. So, the common spaces are inherently gonna be different. So, all of that stuff's available, and some of it is concise, like the stuff that Blueprint Two Twenty put into the levels and everything, and some of it is much more expansive. I mean, I would, I would encourage people that want to take that deep of a dive to approach one of us, or approach building administrators, the principals, and they would be happy, because they're all big cheerleaders of their prospective buildings, obviously. They love where they're working, and they also would love to, you know, garner any support they can for improving the facilities in their specific building.
And Joe, I remember that was a little bit of a different twist. What I heard was, show me the difference visually, like, I went, my mind went visual. So I didn't know if that's something that the board can do as education.
So.
Or if that's like a community education, you know, like that's a community group can do as a part of rallying support around some of this, about when that's high on.
To the website, that's kind of.
I have, I have a quick comment on this.
Okay, quickly?
Quickly.
Lot of time.
My, my kids go to the high school here, and they have an absolutely fantastic audio/video program here. And getting the students who are behind a lot of this Blueprint Two Twenty, granted, they're not taxpayers, but using that initiative and using D H S T V, they could interview, view whatever in the schools and show what it is, the disparity that they have, and, well, you know, what the plans are talking about. Because with the audio/video here, CAD drawings, all that stuff that they could do on, on the D H S T V would be absolutely great.
So. I, I understand what you're saying, that, you know, a picture says a lot more than some paragraph describing something. There's a lot of that written word, if you will, and drawn things on the Blueprint Two Twenty page. So, go there and, it might meet, meet some of your needs. Your point, though, about a tour or a photo, something like that, is, is well-taken. Hard, somewhat, when you, you know, unless you have an open house at every school and see who shows up, and then promise that they're gonna go to the other schools to actually compare, you know? Brian, do you wanna talk a little bit about the web, the?
Well, on the website, under the blueprint, there's a lot of information with several tabs across. If you click on each tab, I think you will find quite a bit of that information now. There are some selected photos, there's also an analysis of every school when D L R, our architects, did a complete facility review. And you will, you can just look at that. If you go, well, let's say Countryside or Roslyn, our two newest elementaries, compared to Grove and Sunny Hill, which were built in the fifties. Significant disparity between, if you just, you just run them side by side, you will see it. And Huff's is kind of unique, because it, core of that building was in the forties or thirties or whatever, but then we've had additions over time and some renovations. So, it's kind of somewhere in between. And then we have the four elementaries that were all built in the early, late nineties, early two thousand. So, we have quite a range there. And we've tried to maintain equity, and we've really worked hard over the years to do that. However, those older facilities are tired, right? And they, and they just need more attention. And that's displayed in these levels and some of the thoughts we've had on each one of them.
So, let me just interject here. We're past time, we did wanna get you guys out of here by eleven, right? So, that said, we also said we'll stay here. So, we'll, we'll declare this kind of officially over, and if anybody needs to leave, right? Then that's fine, right? And in the meantime, we'll continue to stay here and ask questions and have a conversation for as long as people wanna do it. But feel free to leave if, if you would like. Sorry, Penny, I interrupted you.
I just wanna say, the element, even if all we did was the first chart there, the eighty million dollars, I want you to notice, though, that Elementary receives a large chunk of money there. And it's not, you know, it's not gonna expand a school, it's not going to change a footprint, but it's helping the facilities committee, we get about, we get a budget of about two and a half million dollars a year to take care of our buildings. That's not very much money when you think of the, you know, the size of our plant, if you will. And so, please know that what we're trying to do there is reset the clock with our stuff, our HVAC, things like that Brian mentioned. So Elementary is, is receiving money there too. But I wanted to be clear about what it was. I didn't want you to think we were totally neglecting the majority.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you for hosting this for us.
Was this helpful?
Yes.
We got two more of these to do, right? Any suggestions on?
I think the only one thing I would say is, when we're doing the sticker thing, counting the stickers that are on each one, just make sure that you're clear that one sticker per board, because I think without that, the visual gets a little bit off.
I would agree with you. I agree with you, I noticed that too.
We'll have to distribute one, one of each color.
Yeah.
One, it's one sticker from the board.
You guys were the main voice, well, if you come Monday night, you might sell a little.
Thank you for your Saturday morning.
And if anybody wants to come up and.